With, uh, with variances and stuff like that? So they may automatically get that with that. So if a place has an automatic, can they come to this down the shape now?
No, well, we had talked about wind line being the closest one to air. I know Dale.
The rainfall frequency out of the United States.
No, no, I know.
If not, they will be.
I'll see you back my neighbor's truck and then my turkey's truck.
We're ready, we're good. She wants to be the new media.
Good evening, this is Monday, September sixteenth, city council meeting. Clerk, please call it off.
Alderman Sandy.
Here.
Alderman Glad.
Here.
Alderman Schaefer.
Here.
Alderman Beany, here. Alderman Mahavik.
Here.
Alderman Devine.
Here.
Alderman Miller.
Here.
Mayor Judd.
Here. Please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we get started, is there any member of the public that would like to address the city council at this time? See none or looking for, uh, discussion or any items that you would like to pull off of the consent agenda, five A through five H? Any items for separate consideration? Looking for a motion for five A through five H as per. Uh, Alderman, no?
I would make that motion to approve consent agenda five A through five H.
Thank you, second? Alderman Sandy.
I second the motion.
Thank you, discussion on these items?
Yeah, I'm sorry, the September second meetings are really the third, right? We already made that edit?
It's supposed to be the third, right?
I think so.
That's correct.
So five F?
Oh, yeah, the third, it was Tuesday.
So five F is September third, two thousand nineteen, uh, the second. All right, no discussion, clerk, please call it off.
Alderman Miller.
Yes.
Alderman Sandy.
Yes.
Alderman Glad.
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer.
Yes.
Alderman Beany.
Yes.
Alderman Mahavik.
Yes.
Alderman Devine.
Yes.
Thank you, council. Uh, first action item on the agenda is six A, it's discussion to extend the original capital development and impact fee reduction with a waiver of fees for single-family homes with the option of to prepay for period not to exceed a hundred twenty days or January twenty-fourth to two thousand twenty. Ross, do you want to present this out?
Thank you, mayor. Uh, in two thousand eighteen, staff was approached by multiple developers asking for a reduction in impact and capital development fees for single-family homes. Originally, staff was asking for a reduction period of two years. Council agreed to a one-year reduction but required a full capital development fee study to be performed and reviewed in September of two thousand nineteen. The current reduction period ends September twenty-fourth. Staff's been working with Baxter and Woodman on this study over the last six months and it's in its final stages. The study is near completion, but there will be many decisions both staff and council will need to make with the results. It's important we analyze this study and put in place fees that are both beneficial to addressing needs of the city while maintaining the current upward development trend. Staff is recommending a hundred and twenty-day extension to the current fee reduction period so a complete analysis of the study can be performed.
Thank you, Ross. Uh, discussion? Alderman Schaefer?
Um, just maybe for Carolyn, from a, from an accounting standpoint and maybe a, uh, ease for analyzing and doing all the paperwork, maybe, does it make sense to do it to the end of the calendar year for ninety days?
Yeah, it would be easier than to have them one week.
And is the, is the hundred and twenty anything particular? Is there a lot of building going on or permits are involved in January? I'm just thinking, it, does it, just from a finishing the, the calendar year books or something for that type of thing? I don't know. I know our fiscal year doesn't run on that, but it, it just from a standpoint of...
We could do it in idea, I, I just bumped it up to a hundred and twenty just to make sure in case. I think what's gonna have to happen is Baxter and Woodman is gonna be presenting to council with a couple of different options moving forward and I wanted to make sure that we had enough time. So we may complete that within the next thirty days or forty-five days. We want to get them in here as quick as possible. I just, we haven't had those final meetings yet to discuss the options. So I just wanted to make sure there's enough time, but I think we could get it done.
And even if that period goes to where we do it in January and we don't have anything for that thirty days, we're not, I, I don't assume...
Right, just revert back to the old fees at that point until we...
I mean, I, I can go either way, I just, it was just a thought or suggestion. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Sandy?
Well, I guess on the same vein, you said near completion in the first paragraph. Is there a timetable on that near completion? Are, are we talking another month before Baxter Woodman is completed or one year on reviewing it?
Well, it's, it, they are waiting to have a final meeting with us, hopefully within the next week or two, uh, to present the study to us. And then, um, again, it'll be an option-based. You know, the, the study looks at the entire city, the infrastructure, the future land and use map, things like that. So we have to make some decisions on what we think our projected, uh, population is gonna be over a ten- to twenty-year period. Something that Doug and I and Troy have all been working on, so that's... Once they present those options to us, then we'll bring that to council with the staff recommendation. So to answer your question, I hope to have that done within the next two weeks, that meeting. Uh, get those, get that finalized and then bring it, bring it to council for a, uh, discussion.
Count, oh...
Go ahead.
Council asked that that study be done, correct?
Yes.
I'm assuming it cost a fair amount of money?
It did, yes.
So I think it would make sense that we follow a process that gives us time to adequately review it and make decisions. So I would think if staff thinks a hundred and twenty days is what's needed, that we should make the best use of that investment and make sure we have the time to do it right.
I also want to add, you know, with the transition from, uh, with Troy up to Public Works Director and then we have newly hired, uh, project engineer Greg who has experience in municipal setting as well in this type of work. He's only been on board with us for two weeks. So to get him involved with it and, and to get his professional opinion on it is, is another reason why we're looking for that extension because, you know, it's important that we make the right decisions.
Well, I, I would also add, in addition to what Ross had mentioned, that Greg has a, a unique skill set in that he has worked both on the developer side and on, um, the consultant side of more kind of infrastructure-based engineering. So he's, he's gotten both sides of, um, the, the development impact fees, um, issue.
If, if I could add too, um, I haven't been a large part of the study. I've been in on the meetings, but Troy's department and Ross's department have been a, a larger part of the study. But just being in on the meetings, it's been a massive undertaking. And, and Baxter Woodman has compiled a lot of information and it's just a lot to digest and analyze. And it's just been a lot of information to collect and put together and to, I think, properly disseminate among a lot of parties. So moving forward, I, I, I just think it's the right decision.
Alderman, just to clarify though, there, there are two different things. You're talking about having time to digest and finish up the, the, uh, the study, but this is what we're talking about here is for the annexation fees and impact fees, correct? We're not, we're not talking about moving the study up or moving the timeframe up for the study or making them work harder or you guys work harder or faster. This is just for the impact fees to continue or, or stop a certain date.
Well, we don't want to revert back to the old fees and have development come to a complete halt. You know, we want, we want to allow development to continue in that upward trend that it is at the reduced rate until we fully analyze that study and implement new fees. And again, those decisions have to be made by council because there's, there's a set of options where we can have a reduced fee amount if we don't make these improvements over the next ten or twenty years based on population estimates. So I mean, it, it's, and it's gonna come to you and they're gonna give you a full, uh, overview of the study and, and as a team, we'll have to make that decision. But all this is doing is keeping that reduction period in place so that they can still sell homes.
Alderman Miller?
So I'm gonna probably speak the opposite direction as Alderman Schaefer and, and say that a hundred and twenty days may be short-sighted on our thoughts. If it's gonna take a long time to consume that report, I, I wouldn't want to short-change our department heads and short-change our builders seeking an opportunity. Because we're now going into the fall, where building is traditionally gonna slow down. And then we'll see a resurgence come January, February, looking for spring builds. So if we haven't reached a decision or we're still consuming information, I don't want to be in January one going, "Well, we don't know what we're gonna do yet, so I don't know if we're back at regular rates or not at regular rates." I would still want to be incentivizing them to seek building permits. So I would almost want to be longer than a hundred and twenty days, not shorter than a hundred and twenty days until we come up with a big plan. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I, I think we were conservative with that hundred and twenty days. I, I think that we can definitely get it done within that timeframe, so...
I just wouldn't want to short-change our potential spring market builds.
Right.
Um, because those tend to start to roll in, well, you know, January and February to dig in the dirt.
Right.
First thaw.
So then it sounds like we should build longer, is what you're saying?
I, I, I would. I mean, I wouldn't want to January one not have a incentive plan in place and people go, "Oh, no, we're not gonna build in McHenry anymore because they're not incentivizing us with reduced rates."
Well, and that, and those are the decisions that...
Can we vote on it right now? Because the, the study's not gonna mean anything if we all agree that it should be, the incentives should be in place forever.
Well, we're gonna have to look at the study and then determine what we want to do with the numbers that come back from the study.
The cut and piece.
Alderman Sandy?
No, I'm not. Normally I'd mess that up, but no.
Much for your insanity.
The, um, the hundred and twenty days is what came up tonight, you know, in regards to what's, what's staff is recommending. And i- if in fact it gets to that deadline close to a hundred and twenty days, if it does get passed, you know, staff can and even any council members can, um, ask that we extend it if really, if it's needed. And just to look at the other side, we've, we've had this on the table now for a year. And, and I'd like, and I'm not pushing them, but I, I just want to, I, I was hoping to get the bottom line on the table by the end of this month. It's not gonna happen. And giving them a hundred and twenty days is, is, I, I hope that's more than enough that we get Baxter Woodman and staff to maybe, to make sure that they review things and they come in with some options and recommendations to us. And we have enough time to absorb it too. But if we don't, let's, I, I mean, we can always call and we, we, you know, we have an option, everything is tabled if, if need be. Because I would have loved to have seen something tonight, I'm not gonna see it. And, uh, staff has made that recommendation. I, whole, I, I'm willing to go with that right now and, and then get this thing wrapped up. It's on heaven.
Alderman Beany?
I was actually gonna just ask if there was any issue in extending it another hundred and twenty days if necessary or go thirty days once we hit January if we need it for time. Kind of the same thing.
Alderman?
Yeah, when we're talking about extending this, I think everybody needs to look at, is it that important that we have that much residential development going on right now versus the fact that we're giving away city tax dollars? I mean, these are tax dollars that our residents will have to pay down in the future. Because we're not collecting as much as we should for the impacts, and that's what an impact fee is. It's so that, it was created years ago so that future growth would not impact the residents that live in this town at this time. And basically, when you're cutting those fees, what you're doing in fact is just taking and reducing the income that the city gets for, and the schools for the impacts of these houses that get built in the near future. And consequently, let's say like the expansion of the, uh, treatment center. You know, the central wastewater treatment center. Who do you think's gonna have to pay for that when, uh, development comes and takes up the capacity and we're back to having to expand it? We're not collecting completely for it. So consequently, who winds up paying? It's tax dollars or the users of the water and sewer system. They wind up having to pay the, uh, the shortfall. And that's why I can't see going any further than this. And, uh, I would hope when that survey comes in that we have a discussion one meeting and have time to really analyze it afterwards after those discussions before we just go forward with it.
Just to touch on that, the plan is to bring Baxter and Woodman in here and have it as a discussion item. Then go back and, uh, come with something at a later point for a vote.
Yep.
I'm gonna disagree with Mr. Glad and remind everybody, first of all, I think council made a mistake doing it for only one year. A one-year building cycle's very short, really, when you're talking about new development. And as I recall, those developers wouldn't have built anything in the city of McHenry had we not made that reduction. They wouldn't have come back into this community. So if we want to talk about our tax base, that water treatment plant was being rebuilt regardless. Now we actually have annual taxes on these properties to collect from. We're not collecting nothing in the impact fees, they are reduced. But we are building our tax base by doing that and having more development in the community. So, um, I think it was a, a smart move to reduce them and I wish we would have done it longer and not had to revisit this so soon.
All right. Alderman Glad?
Yeah, and, and that's the fact that additional development brings in additional tax dollars or property tax dollars and sales tax dollars. But it also does give more impact to city services, city staff and everything else. So I mean, it, it all correlates, as one grows, so do the others and the costs to do business grows because of it. So it, it's a trade-off to some extent. Again, I, I just cannot see that where we are going to wind up with future users having to pay the, all of us having to pay down in the future for the developments that we're so desperately seeking right now to expand. And you know what? I, I, I've, I've sat up here long enough and dealt with enough developers that by golly, they will tell you anything to get what they want. That doesn't mean they would all walked away if we had said no to that reduction. If we had gone a ten or twenty percent reduction, some of them would have stayed. And maybe those are the only ones we wanted. Maybe we don't want just everybody and anybody coming in and, and building in here because it's cheap. We want good quality development and we also do not want to impact the residents that are here at, uh, the city right now.
Derek?
I just, I just wanted to say I, I acknowledge that Alderman Glad and, uh, we didn't, we didn't provide the initial, um, the original number and then as part of this packet. But we can give it back to council as part of any future discussions too or beforehand to take a look at. But I know one of the discussions we had as staff, and this is coming back over a year now, and brought to council too was, you know, that distinction to address exactly what you're saying that, you know, really we were focused on the three hundred or three hundred and fifty lots that, that had been planted, were part of subdivisions or individual lots in the city, the spur of the development on those homes. And, and took a careful look at the time to make sure that, that the impact of those, um, you know, was accounted for and could be handled as, as part of, you know, the part of our operations. And also tried to make it clear too, and I'll say it again, that, um, any future development beyond those homes as part of those subdivisions are the ones that we specifically identified. So for example, if a new subdivision came to us tomorrow, to me, that's a totally different, that's a totally new discussion that we have with that developer. Just because we, we have reduced fees or had reduced fees for existing subdivisions and existing homes doesn't apply, as far as I'm concerned, to new, uh, a new subdivision that would come in. And so we want to make sure we draw that distinction. And importantly, what the study shows is where we should be at, right? I mean, you know, we've, you know, we, we raise, we raise or lower or whatever it is, but we want, we really wanted to and council really wanted us to take a look at where we needed to be uh, for, for capital development, for impact fees, and that's what it'll show. So I think we're all getting to the same end game where we're spurring development based on existing lots that we had. That's proven to show that there's developments occurred and there's stuff going on. And that's the one part of the story. The longer-term part of the story is what do we do with the fees for new, for new subdivisions, new development that may come in the future? To me, it's two, two distinguish, uh, two distinguishable conversations. But, yeah, I understand totally.
I'll also add, the hundred and twenty days, don't, don't we have some decision on the schools portion too? So there is, you know, so there is other things that, you know, we can certainly adjust. I'm sure that's in, in the cards to, to have that discussion as well. So just keep that in mind as well. Uh, Alderman, Sandy?
Yeah, I just wanted to, um, say when this originally was passed, it was, we had the option of the one, two-year. And in discussions, we decided to go with the one-year. And on multiple occasions after that passage, I personally had discussions with multiple staff members saying that it was probably a six-to-nine-month window to get this completed. So we're at the tw- just about the twelve-eleventh month window. And I, you know, I, I would hope I had, I had seen something by tonight. But with that being said, you know, I'm willing to, you know, go, go forth with the one-twenty. And even the fact that if it comes back to us and, and we have to possibly, you know, put some more days attached to it, you know, I, at that time, I may be comfortable doing that. But it was discussed, you know, it was discussed pretty, with a lot of, you know, in-depth discussion. And, you know, when I received that information from staff, I, you know, I, I was comfortable with this one-year. With this one-twenty, uh, just get it done. And, and, uh, I think it does fall into place where we're still able to cover the needs of potential builders and developers that are coming in that will be looking for lots early in the year.
Alderman?
Yeah, uh, what I was gonna get at too is, is the fact that, uh, look around town, look at our streets. We've got a lot of streets that are falling apart. It's infrastructure. Troy can tell you how many pipes that he's had to line and replace in some cases because, hey, a lot of our infrastructure is getting older. You know, anywhere that we can get income, we need to get income. Bringing in new residents isn't going to enhance the income to correct those problems. So why would we want to take and reduce impact fees that are going to cause us more headaches down the road as far as shortfalls that, again, our residents are gonna have to pay for? You know, you look at, you look at the flooding that we have and, I don't know, maybe we need to look at our ordinances to where we have a little stricter, uh, detention, uh, limits because, uh, you know, granted, it was a, a storm and the fact that I was just talking with Troy probably before the meeting and I don't know, maybe it was an intensity close to a hundred-year storm. Hundred-year storm is not how often it happens, but the, uh, impact that, you know, that we have. And I take a look at Ann Street and Thirty-One, that construction didn't have anything to do with it. Because there was as much, if not more so, flooding on the east side past the downfall of the, uh, where the creek was coming rather than what was coming from the other direction. Granted, that was also impacted a lot. But, uh, what has significantly happened since we fixed the problems on Ann Street twenty, twenty-one years ago? And, uh, the only thing I can say is, is we've had development. We've had, uh, more lots in the corporate center built. We had, um, Crestwood Trails that was built. We had Patriot Estates developed and built. And granted, uh, they all had to build detention ponds, uh, according to our ordinances. Well, maybe those ordinances just aren't strict enough. And we need to readdress that because, uh, hey, it's not holding the water back. And that's the only differences I've seen along that drainage way because that all comes back, goes along the railroad tracks and then comes down over there near Ann Street. You know, between Ann and Lillian comes across Thirty-One. So a lot more water coming through here and what is it? It's, a lot of it's gotta be from, uh, uh, development. Now, what bothers me is, is I've, I've been talking about Boom Creek for several years and, uh, we're gonna have to do something with that someday. We can keep talking and talking, but, you know, we haven't even seen, uh, the first shovel of dirt moved over there, in the huge subdivision for Jurstadt that was approved years ago, uh, south of, uh, Sludge and Lakes and, uh, with Boom Creek. And I just noticed that the Stoddy property I think I saw for sale... And I just noticed that the Stoddy property, I think I saw a for-sale sign on that. So we could wind up having developers knocking on our door over there. You know, are we gonna be prepared? Are we gonna be ready for this stuff? Or are we going to just go with the ordinances we have and impact these main waterways that we have to the river as we go? After, are we gonna be proactive or are we gonna be reactive? You know? And I just think everywhere and anywhere that we look at impact fees or any other type of income that helps pay for the development of the city and helps preserve what we've got, I think, I don't want to give a short call on.
All right, just for the record, I mean, you know, staff and at least our conversations, we agree that this is why we're doing this study. And with Troy just getting over, you know, taking over this position, we just need the time. Because we needed his input in this as well. So, all we're asking for is a hundred and twenty days just to make sure we're making the right decision. And as far as I'm concerned, I'm guessing it would probably be going up. You know, but we just need that hundred and twenty days. I'm not gonna talk about flooding or anything like that. I'm just, let's stay on topic and just, you know, we're just looking at a hundred and twenty days to extend it and go from there. Alderman?
I apologize, but I only brought up ninety for the accounting and the cleanliness of ending it at December thirty-first or whatever, just for keeping things easy to track and maintain and take care of. I, I hope we get fifty termites in January. But I, that's the only reason why I brought it up. So, we've done sixteen percent, I think, through this period today. So, of our open lots, I should say. So, that's the only reason I brought it up. I apologize to have it go way, way, way off target.
No problem. Is there anyone in the public that'd like to make a public comment regarding this item? See none? At this time, looking for a motion for six A is presented. Alderman Beany?
I think that question is presented.
Thank you. Second? Alderman Miller?
I'll second.
Thank you. Discussion? Clerk, please call the room.
Alderman Beany? Yes. Alderman Miller?
Yes.
Alderman Devine?
Yes.
Alderman Mahavet?
Yes.
Alderman Schaefer?
Yes.
Alderman Glab?
No.
Alderman Sandy?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Next item on the agenda, discussion item regarding Prairieland Disposal Yard Waste Program. Troy, and we have Steve here from Prairieland as well. Troy, you wanna go ahead and start us off?
Thank you, Mayor. Staff are presenting the topic of Saturday Yard Waste Program Drop Off in order to open a discussion with council regarding the current state of the program as well as the future program. Provided for council consideration is background information about the existing program, current city and contractor operational considerations, information regarding the yard waste services in other local communities, and potential options for reforms to existing services. Steve Schweisenberg, President of Prairieland Disposal, being a tenant to provide, pick up and drop off that for your information and discuss options for potential reforms to this existing Saturday Yard Waste Program with staff and council. So, all being said, Steve is here to speak. And as all, you're all aware, we've had some traffic control issues and just some, you know, concerns from the public about the program at different times this year. And we'd just like to visit where we're at and talk about, you know, where things may go.
Steve, would you like to come up and say anything first before we have this discussion? Or would you like us to have that discussion?
It doesn't matter. I can, I mean, if you guys want to discuss it, and I could answer any questions that the council would have.
All right, is there any questions for Steve at this time? Alderman Sandy? Just, I'm sorry, that's Steve. Staff question, when does the waste program end? End of October?
Yeah, December.
Oh, December, okay. First week of December? Is that what it is? Okay. Thanks. Alderman Glab?
Yeah, what's the intake been over the last several months since we did away with the city stickers as far as drop off?
It has increased. When we first started this three years ago in August, it was about twenty-five yards, a little over twenty-five yards on a Saturday. And we always brought two trucks there, two men. It was very comfortable, easy. We accomplished it easy. Now it's, it's become like a race. I mean, there's people coming in, we have men working as fast as we can, trying to empty them out. I know there's traffic issues, that cars are backing up past McDonald's and they're cutting in line. We hear residents complaining that other people from out of the area are coming because there's no vehicle stickers. I've personally been there, I know the mayor's personally been there. I've witnessed, people from Glanview have been there, people from Wisconsin have been there. Because they have to pay for the, they have, they have, all villages have different services. And those particular villages have to pay for their yard waste. So they know, McHenry has free drop-off on Saturday. And the word gets out on family members, the people who live in a village with no vehicle stickers, there's no way policing who's coming. I mean, we have people with, that come in, they're van, work vans, you know, big trucks unloading a lot of yard waste. Now, there's a lot of, there's a lot of residents here, you know, sincere residents that come with their one, two bags. And we see them every week. They're the same people, I know, we know the residents. But we know there's a lot of outside people coming. We've, we had a similar program in Richmond years ago. And they had a roll-up box for a drop-off. And we were emptying it every week, twenty yards every week. Now, Richmond's a smaller community, it's only five hundred homes. We eliminated the drop-off and put it at the curb, and our volume dropped fifty percent because of that. There was another one. People had, people find out that there's a free drop-off, and people abuse it, is basically what happens. And it's unfortunate for the residents, but, I mean, we have all, we're looking at alternatives to pour your residents to make it more convenient for them.
Any other questions? Alderman Beany?
You know, I just have a question. I know you've laid out some options for how this might work, you know, under a different structure. But if there's people coming from out of town, would it be possible, since there aren't vehicle stickers and only five hundred people in the entire city that are using the service, to have some kind of sticker that people, you know, like a permit sort of thing, that people pick up at City Hall in order to be able to use that service? I don't know if it's something you've done in other communities. Like, does it have to be something that's completely citywide? Either you get a bag or you, you know, buy stickers for, you know, trash at curbside? Or is there an option to do something that if someone wants that service, they pick up some kind of permit or sticker from the city and just those people can utilize it? And it could still be at no cost? And, you know, would reduce those out-of-town people?
It would, but there's, the problem is, is it's up to, would be up to our employees to police it. And the residents get, they get mad if we question, if we were to question anybody. We don't question anybody when they come there because it's a free drop-off. It would have to be manned by the city, somebody would have to, a police officer or somebody, somebody from the city would have to be there to police it.
Isn't that the same with the one, with the city stickers? Like, if it was something affixed to their window, isn't that what, do you guys not police that either?
It's, the problem, I know the city sticker, they were used to the city sticker and everybody knew that. Now the city sticker's gone, and it seems like we're getting a lot more outside, outside people coming. And if you had a yard waste sticker available, they, you know, it's already set in motion where it's busy. I mean, the last, we did five studies and we're over five hundred cars in six hours. That's quite, that's quite a few cars. And if you had a sticker, we, I believe it would reduce.
So that, that's what, that was, so that's, the sticker's really unimportant in the conversation then? So, people could come from Glanview, Wisconsin regardless?
Right now, yes.
Since, well, even, let's say when we had city stickers. You're kind of saying right now that nobody's policing it, that your guys are asking questions or telling people they can or can't drop off, which I understand. But, so the city sticker's not the problem, like?
Well, people come with their company vehicles on, and they say it's their work. They live in a city, but they have a company vehicle, those type of things. So they wouldn't really have a sticker on their window.
Okay, so, so there's really no way to police whether it's someone local or not in this situation?
Unless you ask for everybody's ID.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, it's, and five hundred cars in six hours, there's really not enough time to do that unless we had somebody else to have.
Alderman Glab? Yeah, I was gonna say, okay, you know, and I think I brought that up when we were first talking about the city stickers. But I think it's a good idea to put that sticker and make it available to residents. I think having a city staff out there for a certain period of time until we get it back in control would help, considering if we don't and we leave it the way it is, the police has gotta be out there. The chief, you gotta send somebody out there quite a few times, right? You got a call from me that one time a couple months back because it was all the way up to one-twenty.
They've just been putting out columns and I face the problem.
So all I'm getting at is, okay, so we put somebody out there on those Saturday mornings for a certain period of time, and then just every now and then, once it gets controlled, that we just monitor it every now and then. And just, you know, they'll never know when we're gonna be there, you know, for, let's say, the first two to three months. And then after that, once every couple weeks, you know, surprise. And I think that would control it. And I think you'd probably see that ninety-five percent of those that are dumping right now that shouldn't be would go away. And I really think that's where we need to go instead of, you know. I thought about the convenience of being able to throw in bags and put it by the curb. And then I think, okay, now you've got all these bags that are also sitting out there. Where you have a lot of residents that complain about the trash folks sitting out in front of the houses that are supposed to be on the side. If somebody doesn't get a pickup until Thursday or Friday, and they do their yard work on Saturday, that bag is gonna sit outside possibly in five inches of rain in one hour or in one day. And they're gonna be soft and wet, they're gonna be just spillage, and the curbside could look like hell. You know, I think if we come up with a better solution, maybe it would work. But that's my reservation, more so than anything else, is what's the look of our community done? Trash day, or even before trash day, with those bags sitting out everywhere? And this way, they mow their lawn, they get it ready, and the way they go to the yard. I mean, I've seen people with two full garbage cans full of grass clippings. And the way they pick them up, your guys pick them up, and they're pretty strong. But you can tell they're lifted, so they gotta be pretty full. And how much, how many bags is that gonna take to fill two thirty-gallon cans of waste clippings? Just grass clippings? Probably three bags?
Four total, yes.
Yeah, so I mean, and that's probably, I don't know what the average resident would use. I mean, I wouldn't use it because of the fact that, yes, I'll have clippings from bushes or whatever. I mulch all my grass clippings. But a lot of people don't believe in that, and a lot of people will want to bag it. I don't know, it makes you wonder how many, how many bags you're gonna see out there on the curbs. And for how long? It's just going to impact Ross's department a little bit more with more complaints about people that have their bags out there for three or four days before the pickup. You know, I'm sure he's still probably getting phone calls about the trash dumpsters that are left in front of the garages. And are we gonna just create more problem for us by doing it that way? Like I said, the convenience is nice, but the problem is, is from the time that they do the lawn work to the time it gets picked up, it can be a long stretch. So, that's my reservation.
Alderman Miller?
So, the recommendation in the agenda item was to perform a citizen's survey about the options that were being presented for the reform. I have a couple questions about past surveys. Have we had a good response for citizen surveys?
So the most, as far as public works, we haven't run one in a while. The most recent survey we've done would probably be the surveys that were done for the part of the referendum. Building out any sites on what sort of number in terms of?
Well, I think we all know what the response was on that. But I just mean, wasn't what, as a council that we hold, you know, I think based on the comments that we had as we went through that, there was something that felt that that was not representative?
Which is in terms of participation, in terms of the number of responses we got back.
Well, based on, based on what a consultant was, it was right in line of what we would expect. But based on, so they thought, they thought it was representative. I think we always hoped there's gonna be more than there is. You know, we probably got a quarter of the households that responded.
So I guess it's that?
So we had a twenty-five percent response rate? Is that what you were saying, Bill?
Best I can remember, I think we were in that range.
I think that's exceptional.
But it wasn't at the home neither? Just, right, there was only select?
Well, we did, when we did the community assessment, and then we did the mailing. The mailing was sent to all the homes, and that was the one I'll base it off of. Because, I mean, it wasn't a representative survey. That was, everybody got that survey, checked this box, envelope, to send this back. It was all squared away. I don't remember how many total we have in my calendar.
So let's move my conversation forward.
Yeah, we're about, we're about, we're about to.
So, if the recommendation is to survey our citizens and say, what do you want to do with your yard waste? I guess my concern would be, if we give them the options of the three options for reform, are we, are we giving them too many variables to make a decision? And are we gonna get good information back? Or do we need to start thinking about what we're willing to contract for and asking them, here are your choices, what would you be more happy with? Adding another toter, to speak to Mr. Glab's, the craft bags are gonna be a mess in a week, especially if we get rained on or snowed on or whatever it's gonna be. So if we have to add a toter, what's that cost going to be? The rental rate? And if not, you know, the cost when you looked at the dollars and cents for that unlimited pickup was ginormous. So, my concern is if we put out a survey, if we're looking for citizen input, what are we gonna ask them? Do you want, you know, do you want it all? Or this is the only option we're looking at? Because at the end of the day, they're paying for it. So I would want to give them two choices, not necessarily three, if it weren't me sending out a survey.
Well, these three choices, they're not set in stone either. We can boil down what we want the choices to be. But if we wanted community feedback, the way to do it would be a survey of some sort.
Because what I'm hearing in my seat is that the Saturday option's not working. It's being abused, and there is no way to monitor it without going back to a city sticker, which we obviously have already said there's no enforcement to. So how do we work that out? So, Saturday, and by your study of all other cities, nobody's doing the Saturday thing. So the curbside, either toter or pickup or bags are the options that we need to look at and decide what are we gonna offer? And at what cost does that be? Am I reading that right?
That's correct. I mean, unless we want to go to a different level of effort on our part to, to enforce the residency requirements.
Because when I'm looking at the cars and just in my head, looking at the number of cars and those dates, and we now see a, you know, an average, that would not be an unusual, because I go and dump yard waste. That, to me, is not an unusual amount of cars, given the amount of rain that we've had. Normally in August, we have brown grass and we're cutting grass every other week. This year, we've not had that experience. I've trimmed my trees three times this year. So for me, this is an unusual amount of people that have used that service. But I don't know if these are residents or not. Steve, you probably know that better than me.
Well, so, I mean, a lot of people are residents, a lot of people are not.
Right.
And we don't know the numbers, we've never taken a survey since we started. This is the first time that we started doing a car count and see actually what's going on there. And I've been there myself, I've asked people where you're from, and they would tell me. Just thinking I was a driver and not knowing, not knowing where it was gonna go. I just, I want to add something. We're proposing two bags at the curb at no charge, no stickers. Okay, it would not only benefit the people for the drop-off, they wouldn't have to put the stuff in their car and go on Saturday and spend the Saturday in line. But it would benefit the people that are utilizing yard waste stickers at this time at the curb. Okay, we are, and another thing, we are already driving down the roads to pick up those. We're averaging about six hundred and sixty bags a week that people are buying stickers for. It's just an average, about six hundred and sixty at the curb. We are driving down every single street to pick up yard waste every week. Alls we be doing, we be picking up, we be stopping and picking up the material up. Another thing is, it's a big liability issue at the drop-off. When we first started, it was no problem, it was... Um, when we first started, it wa, it was no problem, it was, it was light, it wasn't, it wasn't busy. We have so many people, two trucks running all the time, it's like, it's, it's like a circus and it's getting, and people are getting too close to the trucks operating. It's a big liability thing. I mean, you see trucks are strong, I mean, they're dumping cans in, in a rear load with the blade running and get there, you know, they want, they drop their can, they go to get their can and the blade's gonna hit their arm and break their arm. Uh, I don't want anybody hurt, I mean, it's a big liability issue. I'm not out there every week, I mean, our drivers know to keep people away from there, but people walk up to the truck, they wanna help, they dive in, they start dumping the cans themselves. That's, that's a big issue, the liability. And plus we get, it's a mess on the ground. Uh, when we leave there, there's, I mean, we have the guys pick up what we can, but there's yard waste all over the gravel lot. Um, you know, those are a couple of issues, uh, that I have with it, the biggest thing is liability. But we are dr, I just wanna let the council know, we are driving down these streets every week to pick up yard waste for people that are buying stickers. It's only gonna benefit them because they're gonna get two, there's two less stickers of, of per pickup for them and it's gonna benefit the people that are usually utilizing that Saturday drop-off, they don't have to put it in their car and waste, you know, waste a half a day on Saturday for, uh, drop off.
Steve, another community is that you do the craft bag pickup. Um, how often does that get weather icky?
You mean, if it rains out and the bags get?
How many people just put them on the curb on Saturday and leave them there all week? Tell their pick.
I can tell the people on Saturday, they're, they, they've cut that grass the week before and say on Sunday and that bag was sitting all week long getting rained on and they bring it there and, you know, the bottom's out of it and we, we have to, uh, handle it like you're, like it's dynamite to try to get it in the truck without spilling. Those, they, they have their, their stuff out there, it's no different, if somebody has the yard waste, if they have it out there for a week, it's gonna, it's gonna get wet and you gotta grab it from the bottom and pick it up. Some bags do, do break apart, but on the average, everybody's pretty good about it. I mean, I'm really, we don't have an issue about it.
Alden Schaefer?
Um, Steve, a couple of things, you, you had mentioned that in twenty sixteen, there was, it was like twenty-five yards, but you didn't say what it is today.
Well, the yard, it's, it's in your, uh, agenda packet, July twentieth was thirty-one yards, it, July twenty-seventh was forty-three, it's average of forty yards right now.
So that's pretty.
Yeah, August tenth was fifty yards. I mean, we're been, we've been, there's some, these were just four, four weeks recorded. I know sometimes we have, you know, it's two and a half, three loads that we've had there, I know when the mayor, uh, I seen the mayor out there, he, he was, uh, helping out there, it was, uh, over three loads that day. We have to, we bring two trucks, we have to break one off that would dump, uh, and then people get, people get mad, all the trucks leaving, you know, they got one guy here. And these, these guys are working their tails off trying to, trying to, uh, you know, take care of everybody's to keep the line moving. So, I mean, it just, it's, it seems like it's increased dramatically, uh, being that yard waste costs are, uh, increasing throughout other villages, especially when I've seen somebody from Glenview coming over, I mean, that's a, that's a ride to take, take a ride from Glenview unless we're going to see their mom or something out here.
That's on us, that's not, you guys shouldn't be having to police that, that's on us, I think personally. Um, the, the other thing I was gonna ask you about is, I, I did, um, I've had two neighborhood, um, and, and get together, so to speak, and what the, the interesting thing that comes back is the perception for everyone is that this is a free, uh, free, uh, service for them to take advantage of. We know, they know that the cost is in there somewhere, so, um, people think when you're taking that away, at least then they're losing something, um, even though that they're getting offered to have this done at the curb. It was, most of the people were like, oh, yeah, I could probably do that, but I do, I have more than a couple of free, you know, a couple of bags of what I do. The, the, the other thing was, you know, you talk about the liability issue, I've actually, I've used it, I wanna say four or five times this year and, and, and I have been in traffic with the lines, I mean, the line moves actually really well when the two trucks are there with the two guys, so I, um, the police issues and the traffic issues, I, I didn't personally witness, but I did hear about it. The, the other thing I was gonna say about that is maybe our location for where you guys are at doing that is not the right place. Uh, you know, we may have other options to curb that or do something different with it too before we decide to throw it all, all away. And I, I know, I, I, Sue, I don't wanna say that when you say that there's no one doing a drop-off and that there's no one, there's no options to the stickers, because there, there is, we don't have to do a vehicle sticker, but there are other communities that have drop-offs that are doing it differently for the residents. So we talked about this at, at the committee level a few times and there are, there are ways to do it, but I, I just don't wanna say there is, there's no other cities doing it and there's no other options to it, but, um, and I do, I do think you have to look at the fact that this summer weather was, was kinda unique and, and there was quite a few, uh, obviously the growth of the grass was predominantly all summer long and still is, so I think that, that has to be taken into account too and I know if you just pick a date in August of twenty sixteen and say we did twenty-five yards that day and you pick a date in August of twenty nineteen and say we did forty, without counting it or looking at it on a relatively, you know, annual basis, it's, it's hard to just pinpoint that, but I just, I just think that if we can find a way to maybe not say it's going away, but find a way to make it run better, Troy, I don't know if you wanna totally get rid of it either, but the, um, the, the, the general perception is that people view it as a, uh, as a good service that is a benefit to them, so.
Absolutely.
That's the thing that we've gotta try to alleviate, if we're gonna change something, um, what am I getting for losing that benefit is gonna be how it, it's gonna be viewed, so.
So this is my thought, I'll read it in a second. Um, what about putting a staff member out there for the next two Saturdays and analyze who's coming through, check IDs, let's, let's come up and see what the percentage is, is out of town?
Or for a tenner dollar.
Um, and kinda see where, where we're really at, is it a new point if it's one percent or two percent or is it twenty-five, thirty percent?
Well, so we, that, that was possible, I mean, we'd have, we'd have to get, um, maybe a little more intrusive than has been in the past because we'd be requesting either some form of identification or a, a city bill or, or something, something like that, you know, before you can look at their sticker, we would have to get a little more intrusive, that being said, we, we couldn't do that, um, that's, that's the direction we wanna go. We, we could stat that for a few Saturdays to really find out if that's what we wanted to do.
Alden? Yeah, all right, one of the options is two free bags per, per week and then if, what are, what are we charging for the third bag? Somebody has the third bag?
You have to buy a sticker.
Which is how much?
Yes.
Pardon? How much is it for the individual sticker?
Two, I think, two fifteen, or three fifteen, I'm sorry.
Three fifteen?
I believe it is, same as garbage sticker.
People love the sticker.
So for those that are taking and using the yard drop-off right now, if they've got three or four bags worth, they're gonna wind up having to pay six bucks a week extra for it, which, again, uh, I'm, I'm fine with asking the residents, however, uh, I think more than anything we should direct staff to come up with a survey, they come back to council, look at before we send it out. I think we ought to look at it and, and make sure that it's what we want to be asked, uh, rather than have it come out there and, and you get either a phone call or somebody, you know, you bump into on the street and they say, well, about this survey, dah dah dah, and you haven't seen the survey, you know what I'm saying? So, um, I'd like, I'd like the residents to, to, to get a survey, uh, I think we should look at whether we keep it or not and that we give them what we've decided as far as if we don't keep the yard drop-off, what is the alternative? So again, like Alden and Miller said, either or, you know? Don't give them too many different options because then you're gonna get too many different views. The only thing that concerns me is, is if you're gonna get a true, um, survey because the people that are actually gonna probably send it in more so than anything else are the people that use the service.
Absolutely, and, and I was just thinking, you know, Steve, you've seen me out there, um, I, I have a big van, if it's four bags, perfect, so, right, so I don't come every week, I come when four bags fit and they sit in my garage. So had, if I had to use two bags, they'd be out there every week, but because I don't have to put two bags and come see you, I wait till I have four bags and the guys help me and it's fabulous. So I think pointedly, the people who use the service are the ones that are gonna respond, so the survey has to be, if we eliminate Saturday drop-off, would you prefer two bags a week or a toter? And that's gonna give us a pointed answer.
But if we, if we bring up a toter, now we're talking more.
A cost, a cost, a toter and a cost.
And that would automatically shut them down as far as nobody even wanted to pay for it.
Well, then that's a good answer.
Correct, and, and that's, that's the thing, I mean, uh, how many people would you be talking that would use more than two bags a week? I think very few. And how stuff are those bags gonna be? If they know they gotta pay for a third one?
But if, I mean, if I'm typical and I know it's two bags a week, I'm gonna put it out every week, I'm not gonna put it in my garage and smell it for two weeks.
You're probably one of the few in this town that, cause I know I'm as bad as most of them, I would have a problem trying to find the place to store two bags in my garage.
Alden, Benny?
Yeah, I just, um, in this discussion about doing a survey, which I think is fine, but I don't think it's okay that we only survey the people that use it because in these options, it says that if we had a tote, it would increase the cost of service for all residents, not just on the tote, and in my world, we have hundreds of townhomes, we pay a premium to have our common areas professionally landscaped, we don't use those services, but we do pay a lot of money, um, you know, to have that landscaping done and nobody uses that service at all, so for that increase to hit, you know, hundreds of homes that, you know, are paying for landscaping but can't, um, use the service, I don't think that would really be fair, so we would have to ask everybody.
That would be a separate toter though.
There would, there would, there was not, the intent was not to charge every single resident for a toter.
Well, that's not, this side would increase the cost of all services for all residents.
Right, that, that would admire.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it would, it would.
You're right, we would need to consider, for all residents that wish to use the service.
But that's not what it said, that's why, that's why I was questioning it, okay?
Right, but I'm sure that's what it meant.
But that, that free service is built into all the costs today, spread out amongst everybody, correct?
I mean, the toters and the slurs.
Yeah, yeah.
If I could add though, it, this, it didn't just, we didn't, we started taking the, um, the counts of the vehicles and the yardage, we started keeping track of it in July, this has been increasing for the last, uh, two years. I mean, it's, I've noticed the increase in the, in the volume, you know, we've never really said anything, now we're getting into, I mean, the traffic issues and people actually arguing, you know, uh, about cutting in line and stuff and this, that's what came up, I guess, they called the city and everybody started complaining, that's what brought this up. But it has been increasing, this, this, it's not just a jolt because of the rain, yes, the rain, there was a lot of, there was storm damage, a lot of brush, that type of thing and the grass, but it's, this has gradually been increasing, uh, over, over time since Waste Management had it.
Can I ask another question up front? When, do you pick up, um, yard waste, same, do you pick up garbage service?
Yes.
Okay, same truck and?
Different truck.
Different truck, same days, okay.
Go ahead, Alden, time?
Um, I have a question, so getting rid of Saturday service would be a benefit for you as well, not having people working Saturdays and having two trucks there, correct?
Basically, yes, that's.
So the cost savings would be, I guess, what I'm trying to get at is not having two bags curbside, maybe four bags curbside or two rubber made containers marked and that would still benefit everybody involved without.
Yeah, if you, if you do the math, if you do the math on, on your packet, uh, I know Troy provided the math, if, if you did the math on how much volume comes in the drop-off, it would be a loser for us, okay? But I know that there's outside people coming, coming there.
Right.
And our truck is already driving down the road.
Right.
And to stop and pick those people up, it's either stop and pick them up or pick them up on Saturday.
So he, so he gave a projection for his operating costs based on the volumes that are being received on Saturdays and based on those volumes and the two bag option, his operating cost would actually increase and, but again, because there, there's a belief that there may be some abuse on Saturdays, that it could be something that's, you know, not, not nearly as bad in terms of operating costs as, as what's shown based on volume.
Less overtime, I don't have overtime on it. We've, we've done it in Richmond and Richmond, there was zero feedback from the residents. Um, I mean, you guys can check with, uh, Richmond, like I said, it was only five hundred homes, but it's still, there's just zero impact in the village, um, for the drop-off.
Chief, do you have a?
Yeah, I just wanted to throw two things out there, we, you know, from the police perspective, we've been doing, the yard waste pickup at Knox Park has been going on for numerous, numerous years. Up until recent, the police have already, always been there to mitigate the ci, the city sticker on the vehicle and the flow of traffic. While we were there, we didn't have complaints and we didn't have issues, but there's an expense to putting somebody there on a Saturday at an overtime rate, but, um, but it is only twenty Saturdays or nineteen Saturdays out of the year and it is only for a limited time. It's, it's when we backed off of that, that we started to see these issues and these complaints come forward. There may be an increase in volume, but it, that combined with the fact that there's no city sticker, so if, if staff were to reinstitute some kind of a sticker for that and put somebody back out there, whoever that may be, to enforce the sticker, if you don't have a sticker, you gotta move off to the side, get a sticker, you know, and then we actually could potentially issue them for a Saturday or two if somebody has proved. The uncomfortable zone for us is, I, I can't have a police officer ask somebody for their identification for a garbage drop-off, it's, it would be an overstretch of their authority, they're wearing a uniform and I wouldn't be comfortable with that. Non-sworn staff member would be fine, but I, that would be, that would be an overstretch and I, I, that would put a liability back on the city, um, for us. We're very, we have strict rules, I know we can require an identification from somebody legally, so. If we required an ID in order to get a sticker, that's a different transaction and that, that would be more of a comfort zone, not to just randomly go up there and ID people just to see what's going on, I, I don't, I wouldn't recommend that.
Alden Schaefer?
Uh, chief, it appears that some people are pretty obvious, if it's an out-of-state license plates or if it's a, a company vehicle from out of the area, even in that situation, those vehicles were still required to have a sticker if it was a person living in the city parking that vehicle here.
Correct.
At the time, so, I, I mean, I don't think we should, um, utilize police, I got an idea that I'd like to talk to you about afterwards depending on how this goes, but the, I, I, I think there's probably some obvious low-hanging fruit we can chop off from, you know, people who are abusing the privilege possibly without having to use that if it does go to that route.
So the recommendation was to do a survey, um, does the majority of council wanna do a survey? And remember, the surveys can come back, the way, you know, just, I know it's the, you know, Aquatics Center comes back and then there's still council members that were like, oh, that's not true, which obviously it wasn't because it didn't pass, but the, you know, where do you go with that? Is it, is it a waste of money to do a survey or do we do what we think is right for the city and, and make a direction, you know, come up with a direction for staff to take with this? I mean, I do like the, the point of doing some type of separate sticker or a, uh, the West Campus, East Campus thing on the mirror, something like that, but I will tell you, outside vehicles, even Wisconsin, the day I was there, there was a lot of cars and there was a guy that stopped and he had Wisconsin work plates, right, a work truck with, uh, Wisconsin plates, he's actually from McHenry, so you can't really always, you know, he just uses his work truck, which is probably smart, uh, but he helped us for a good two hours, you know, um, so I mean, you can't just go buy license plates or anything like that, but, you know, I just don't, I just don't wanna do a survey, it comes back and then we're not looking at the survey and going, okay, let's do this, cause I think everyone still has a vote at that point to, to go with it or not, so I just wanna make sure we're not wasting time or money, so, Alden, but.
Yeah, I just think it's, it, it's great to ask our residents and, uh, again, it is an advisory and if certain council members decide not to follow what the residents, then it's gonna be up to them to explain to their constituents why they didn't follow the survey and why they felt compelled to vote differently than what the survey said. And they may have good reasons why, but I think it's, 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 and again, it was a recommendation from staff to go out with a survey, you know, and I, I kinda agree with that one, you know, I, I just think all we're doing is, is we're asking residents, you know? Maybe the- Maybe the drop-off site is not as big a deal as it was as if you tried to get rid of it 10 or 15 years ago. Because you have a lot more newer residents that haven't been doing it as long, or you have residents that are doing it for 30 years and then all of a sudden you wanna get rid of some. So maybe it won't be as big a deal, but at least we'll know when we send out the, the surveys.
Alderman, Benny?
Uh, I have a couple of things. Bill, do you remember, um, what it costs to do the survey?
I, I just was looking up to get a ballpark, but, um, yeah, it's gonna be around $6,000 to.
Okay, which is substantial.
That.
And I will tell you, my alderman, when I filled out the survey about the rec center, we had a deep discussion about it and did not vote the way that our community asked him to and that was really disappointing. So we spent $6,000 for the alderman to actually say, it doesn't matter what my community says. So I, I think you make a great point, um, Mayor Judd, that why are we spending that amount of money when council really has absolutely zero obligation to follow it and has proven very recently that they won't? Or that they don't feel that they need to. That being said, I, I think maybe it's not a great idea to do that and, you know, considering we're talking about all the ways we can generate revenue and save money, that seems like kind of a waste because it really doesn't influence the end result. I actually love the idea of the two free bags per week. I think that's a great solution, it doesn't really cost anybody anything and I even like, um, Alderman Glab's idea of mulching better. Maybe that would encourage people to have a little bit less waste.
Can you bank them if you don't use them? Can I put four out if I owe them? Everything's on the table, it's not funny.
Do we, a newsletter goes out, when's the next one, newsletter go out if we don't wanna do a survey and we can include a question?
Newsletter just went out, so spring.
Oh, spring is the next newsletter?
Yeah, it's the fall around three, yeah.
Can we hand them out to the people that are there? I mean, do we have to have a, uh, uh, you know, a consultant?
Is that on the water bill?
Do the, uh, you know, full-time consultant do the, the results? Or is it a way to make it more user-friendly and be done here?
Alderman, that?
Yeah, you know, that's a, that's a great idea. Before we decide on sending out a survey, what if we just survey the people that are dropping the waste off to the next week or two? And just ask, I mean, or just hand them a sheet and ask them to vote yes or no, uh, you know, whether or not they would rather drop off, have two free bags dropped off at the curb versus dropping it off and just see what everybody has to say? If nothing else, at least you guys have some kind of an input.
Right, but what if 50% of them are from out of town, they're gonna say, no, we wanna keep Saturdays?
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
I would vote yes, keep Saturdays.
Well, that's, that's where you'd have to.
We just don't know the percentage.
You'd have to have some type of way to, to track that and judge that while you're there.
Yeah, could we police it for a couple of weeks and pass something out? And then, and then revisit this in a month or so?
What if you say, hey, what neighborhood are you from? What's your vision? Which is a good point that identification is an overstep. We need some way to know your address, tell me your, your neighborhood. I live right off of Miller Road. Do you know how many Miller Roads are around?
Can someone that's not an officer ask for IDs? And then if there was an issue and somebody wouldn't get out of line because they didn't live in McHenry, then you can bring the police over, but maybe it's not a.
I mean.
I, I don't, I don't recommend that. I, I recommend if you want to provide a sticker, to buy 500 stickers will cost the city almost nothing. We could probably have them here within a couple of days. Monty has a guy. We just ordered some stickers we just did for video gaming, so we could come up with a sticker. What you can do is, is you can stand out there and say, this yard waste drop-off is only for city residents. It requires this vehicle sticker, this dr- yard waste vehicles, yard waste sticker that needs to be affixed to the vehicle that you're dropping off the yard waste. In order for you to get one of these, you have to prove residency. Now you're not asking them for an identification, it's they're, they're offering it in exchange for the sticker. And so there's a difference in us saying, hey, before you go.
And you could do it while they're there.
Yes.
And we can implement that immedi- almost immediately. And so technically, we would be policing for a couple of weeks while we're passing out a survey and then we can still revisit it and it would cost us minimal compared to a $6,000 survey and we end up with similar results.
I, I, I don't, logistically, if you want us to try to increase traffic, give out stickers, confirm residency and do a survey, I think that's a lot to do a long time. I think the traffic jam's gonna get huge.
I don't think the survey's necessary if you're actually gonna be doing the stickers there. The survey's pointless.
Well, no, we're, well, first thing we'll be able to do is we'll know how many of the 500 people are actually living in.
And how many turn arounds because they're not.
Cause they're just gonna turn around. If you can prove residency, then you, you have to show us a registration card for your vehicle, you know, and we're gonna, we would, we would document the vehicle, that sticker has to be attached to a vehicle.
Yeah, I, I, I think that's the best option is, is really to do something along those lines where you actually have the sticker there, show residency, give them the sticker, that sticker stays on until the next year. And then over that year, we can talk about picking up stickers here.
How many more weekends of Saturday pick-ups do we have?
Five?
Not more than we have yet, uh, yet in November. So we had, uh, maybe 10, 12.
One, two.
10 to 12, so three, basically three months.
Three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11. Are you picking up the 7th of December, first weekend?
No, it's the last, last week or last Saturday of November.
It'd be 11, we have 11 Saturdays left. Really, the leaves are gonna fall down the week of Thanksgiving. Steve, work with me.
Well, we have to, if, I mean, if there's a, or once, please, we'll, we'll.
The leaf truck is separate, that comes for 10.
I keep up my leaves and put them in my bags and I take them to Steve.
Four bags.
Yeah, chief, we still have people lining up, what street is that over there by McDonald's?
Knox?
No.
Park Place.
Parks, right. Uh, have we thought about cutting Park Place off as far as from past McDonald's?
Well, they put cones, he puts up cones every week.
We, we mitigated that almost every Saturday with cones.
Do you?
There's no issues there. Put up cones.
They're not coming in their way anymore, they have to go around.
They've always had to do, this is the problem, is that we stopped, we stopped mitigating it on Saturdays so people made up their own rules. When we had people there and we had a flow, we could actually address an issue and, and if we do truly have people that aren't residents, they don't know the system. So they're just taking right down to McDonald's and then they meet at the intersection. And so now there's cones and automatically says, who has the right of way? Go back up to the top of the hill, go around, get in line.
Like I say, it's been a while since that.
Yeah, and we, we're out there on it every Saturday.
All right, so, little direction by council, um, where do you want us to go with this at this point? Cause, I mean, Troy, where, after this discussion, where do you feel, or chief, both of you?
I like the stickers.
We, we could staff it for a few weeks and see if we can't address this issue. Why don't you give, give us that?
With or without stickers?
I think we will address it maybe with stickers depending on.
Do you want, you want help with that? Do you need us?
Would you like to come and get stickers?
What?
I did gar- I did the garbage, I mean, so much.
Most definitely, we can handle this.
If you, yeah, offer it, people will, yeah, people will volunteer.
Let's, let's get a setup, let's get a system set up, let us get through a few weeks and we can report back to council.
Sounds good, that works.
Can I say, we'll check. Steve? You know, we, you know, we, uh, we addressed this issue and not to get rid of Saturday, I just wanna make that clear. It's not my intent to get rid of Saturday, okay? Our intent is to make all the residents happy as possible, okay? We agreed on doing Saturday pickup. I'm not, I don't wanna quit Saturday pickup, we're gonna continue, our, our, our plan was to continue this year, finish it up and if council would rather have at the curb pickup, we would change over, over to curb. Okay, I just wanna make that clear that we, uh, the residents ultimately have to be happy. So, uh, it's not our intent to just get rid of it, all right? I just wanna make that clear to the council.
Yeah, I like to make something clearer and that's the fact that, that, you know, we have our snow days during the winter. Mayor's always told Troy to pass it on to his, uh, his workers, the fine job they've done and everything else. And I just wanna say that maybe you need to pass on to your workers as well, the fact that, yes, we had a few complaints at the beginning, uh, and I'm sure a lot of them were just either people that they knew that either used to work at Waste Management or there's somebody that did or what have you, weren't happy with, uh, you know, the fact that we changed the service. But, uh, I think your guys have really done a, a top-notch job. You can tell them that at least there's one alderman and probably unless somebody says different, uh, it's probably the whole city council that feels that way.
Thank you very much.
And I think you need to pass it on to those guys.
I certainly will, I certainly will.
We do appreciate it.
Well, thank you, thank you very much. We, we, we try.
Doesn't mean we're not gonna be tough with you that next negotiation.
Thank you, Steve, I appreciate it.
I still, I have one quick question, cause people ask me this all the time. The, doing the one drop, the one-stop with recycling the garbage, people always think it goes into the same spot. Can you just publicly say how that works again?
You go on our website, the truck's split in half. Go on, if you go on our website, there's a video on the truck working. And actually, I believe it is one of the trucks here i- in, in the city that's working and it shows how it works, how it dumps, the whole, the whole procedure on it.
Okay.
But it's trucks split in half, down, uh, from front to back is how it is and there's a, a plate inside that flips back and forth. A lot of people can't see it. Some, some have two hoppers in the back, some of them don't, there's a hopper inside, so it's kinda hard to, kinda, kinda hard to tell. But they are, uh, we do recycle, uh, we do our reports and plus we have all our, um, our dump tickets. Cause we dump in Virginia Road and we have all, all of our records for dumping recycling.
And has the, have we gotten better as a city on the recycling side? Cause I know at the beginning, there was a lot of plastic bags that.
It was a lot, and you know what, it, it's, it's, it's down to pretty much, uh, no con- I mean, we, there's a percentage of contamination, okay? They allow us 10%. Uh, we get very little, uh, rejected votes, I'll, I'll say that. I don't have any percentages with me, but.
So that's improved at least.
When we meet again, when we meet again in a month or something, when we, when we get our results from the drop-off or two months, whatever it is, I can present, I can bring all that to, for you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. I'm gonna go, go ahead and if you have any, are you the only one that would like to make a statement at this time? All right, if you want, might come to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Don't, don't leave.
Chris Bassi, and I live in Fox Ridge. First of all, Steve, I think your employees do an absolutely wonderful job. They're extremely respectful, extremely helpful, and I just think they do a really fabulous job. I've been using the drop-off for a number of years and I've never had an issue, um, with traffic control. So I think that's all working well. A couple of my questions are, um, well, first of all, I think the survey might be a waste of $6,000. I think possibly, as the city council, go door to door and talk to your constituents. I went up and down my street knowing I was gonna go to this meeting today and I talked to all of my neighbors and I said, this is what the city's thinking about doing, what are your thoughts? What are you gonna do? And every single one of them were like, we really need to have this yard waste. We're using it maybe five times a year, but that's a lot, that makes it worth it for each and every one of them. Uh, you've said that there's been an increase. Well, the topic of conversation prior to going to you was the increase of subdivisions. So we're actually increasing our population here and that's gonna have a domino effect. Um, you had said we might go to the two, the two, um, pickups for free at your home. What if you don't wanna have the bag? Can you have a big garbage can with like a big homemade sticker on it?
An X on it, yes, that's a lot, the tents are a lot, 33 units.
So then you're actually recycling as you're going along. You're not purchasing paper bags and then having to throw them in the garbage. You're reducing the waste there. Okay, that was one of my questions. Alderman Schaefer, I just wanna applaud you. You had said that you had two meetings with your constituents, like town halls. I think that's great and I think every one of you alderpeople should be doing this.
They had a Labor Day party, I could show up and ask.
Well, that's right. But the thing is, you know, you represent us and I think it's really important that you set up times. I know that Scott Curry had this wonderful email distribution and it was great. If we had any questions, we could email him to him, he kept us informed of what was going on at all times. So I think eliminating the, um, survey, $6,000 is not really a lot, but I think it's a potential waste of money. Just ask your people, what do you want? I think you're gonna find that most of them want to keep this in some capacity or another. And I think that was everything I'd like to say. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Please, uh, step up to the podium, state your name and address for public record, please.
Um, my name's Jan Wiley, I'm actually a friend of Alderman Miller. And I, um, my address is in Florida. But interesting discussion and, um, I wanted to say also, if you do the survey, that you need to know how much their choice is gonna cost, you know, have, you know? Um, second thing is, in Florida, we do have our, our places where we drop off either yard waste or construction stuff or whatever it is at each of the different stops. We, we do show our driver's license so they know. And they don't have to look at, you know, height and weight, all they're looking at is McHenry, you know? And if they live there, that's great, I think you're gonna make your constituents happy. You can make the McHenry hit people happy if the line gets shorter because people that know they have to show a driver's license aren't gonna get in line. And you have signs right there, show your driver's license, you have a sign 50 yards down saying, have your driver's license out and ready so they can take a peek at it. Might just sense.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name's Dave Thornton, I also live in Fox Ridge. I've been using the service at Knox Park for many years. I've been living here in McHenry for over 40 years and I think that that Knox service that you're providing is a great service to all of the residents in McHenry. The issue is that if we're getting a lot of people from out of the district or out of the city of McHenry, like has already been stated, that needs to be controlled. Who needs to control that? The city, the city needs to control that, you know? So, I know that I'm paying a, a service for the ability to go to Knox Park. I, I mulch when I'm out, I'm out today, I mulch. But I don't know of any yard in McHenry that doesn't have trees, bushes, shrubs that need to get trimmed and it comes to more than two bags for mine. If I was to bag in my yard, five bags. My grass grows two inches a day, you know? And, uh, I am a proponent of continuing with the service at Knox Park and I hope you all agree with what has been said here tonight, you know? You guys represent the residents. We are the residents. We want you to represent us to continue to provide us services in McHenry. A lot of townships and towns don't have the same services. Some have more, some have less. I know of several people who have left McHenry. The reason they left, they didn't feel that the services of McHenry were doing them any good, you know? I know that also, there's a lot of people that are leaving Illinois. I'm not gonna get into the reasons why they're leaving Illinois. But if we wanna continue to maintain the population here in McHenry, which as, as she said, has been growing because you keep building homes, okay? There's nothing wrong with growth, but if you don't have the infrastructure to support the growth, McHenry's gonna die. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you, Steve, for coming, appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you very much. Wayne?
Yes. Oh, Mr. Goddard?
My name's Eric Goddard, I've been a homeowner here for 20 years. I agree with the chief, it's not a police issue to have him ask for ID, but we need to ID people and I'm even for paying for a sticker. I'm not a fee guy, I'm not a city sticker guy, I hate the city sticker. But I'll pay, whatever it is, a couple bucks, five bucks, whatever, I'll come here, I'll show my ID, get a sticker, I'll put it on my car, whatever we can do to make staff's life easier and keep our costs down for our provider so that we can keep this, I think it's a great service. I use it a few times a year, I love it, so. I'm all for a small fee, not a city sticker, for you to drop off the waste so that it makes it easy for staff, so it keeps the outsiders out and that's it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Eric. All right? Thank you, at this time, uh, we're gonna be making a motion to enter executive session. I would ask that all of you please exit the chambers for us to do so and we will, uh, close executive session in roughly about 20 minutes. At this time, hopefully sooner. But, uh, I'm looking for a motion to enter executive session. Alderman Santi?